... Could you please come forward and give our indication as to this, we'd appreciate that.
Sure. Dear Lord, we just love you and we're thankful for the many blessings. We're thankful for this community and all the assets that you've put in place. We're thankful for our city council, for everyone that's here tonight. We're thankful, Lord, for the opportunity that we all have to serve and for the many blessings that you've given to each of us. And we hope that you'll continue to watch over us, watch over our city and our county and our country, Lord. And just bless everybody here and please, everything we do is for your glory. You just aim us in the right direction, Lord, and we just love you, thank you, Jesus. Amen.
Amen.
Thank you.
Thank you, Mr. Pierce. Next is Roll Call, Mr. West.
Councilmember Andy Page.
Here.
Councilmember Johnny Cook. Council President, Gordon Giger Jr.
Here.
Councilmember Judy Folsom.
Here.
Councilmember Clint Hollisworth.
Here.
Mayor Max St. Elton.
Here.
Let the record reflect that Mr. Cook has his daughter's surgery today. It's been turned out well, she is healthy, but he's in Birmingham with her at this time. Next on the agenda is reading of the minutes. We have two sets of minutes from September 12th and September 14th. Council would like them up.
Could we do this together?
If there's no changes, that's up to the motion of council.
I might submit that we suspend the rules so that we don't have to read these out loud.
Motion in the second, please call the council.
Councilmember Andy Page.
Aye.
Councilmember Johnny Cook. Council President, Gordon Giger Jr.
Aye.
Councilmember Judy Folsom.
Aye.
Councilmember Clint Hollisworth.
Aye.
Now at this time, we'll entertain a motion to approve both minutes from September 12th and September 14th. What is the pleasure of the council?
I may accept the minute.
Any further discussion? Having none, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Motion carries for both of those minutes. Any additions or deletions to the agenda tonight?
I'd like to add, under Roman numeral ten, I'm number, no, Roman numeral nine is I am ten. A petition, a requestation to, for the Economic Development Authority to apply for a tiger grant which is several funds for infrastructure.
This is a form of a motion, do we have a second?
Take it.
Have a second, all in favor, say aye, adding up to the agenda. Say aye.
Aye.
All opposed? Hasn't been added to the agenda. Any other additions or deletions to the agenda? Having none, we'll move into our reports. Police Committee, Councilmember Andy Page. The Fire Committee, we have a report tonight, I want to turn my report over to Chief Reinhardt as he comes forward.
Yes, sir. We would like to take this opportunity to introduce our newest member of our fire department. It's Freddie, and he's a member of our fire prevention bureau.
Freddie, go ahead.
Hello, everybody.
Now, they can never argue.
This is Freddie. He is our newest member, he's part of the fire protection program. We've got him through a grant, which was a high, high match. This is going to be in the students, with the kids, and every group, teaching fire prevention and fire safety. He has a lot of good opinions, and he's a very welcome student.
Gee, no. Not Freddie, not Freddie.
Uh, chief, we got some stuff to get to the council members.
Thank you, Freddie.
You're welcome.
Here's some. First, good. I'm not bad. You.
I like that.
Oh, that was bad.
Oh, you got all the fun.
What grade will this, will he go to, Chief Reinhardt?
What grade can you go to, Freddie?
This is possibly going to be used in the elementary schools.
All right.
John Hunt, this gentleman, young man sitting by you, that seems, must be thinking about, if you like, if you like. That's a high one.
He started all the hair.
Yeah. That's nothing right.
Yeah, them all.
I haven't got my uniform yet, but we're going this week.
Uh, this is Freddie.
We just got him today, and he's still burning, and there's a lot of things that we had more of together than he did. I think it's a little bit less of the form.
Oh, it's not that.
Okay.
Thank you, thank you, Freddie.
Thank you, Freddie.
All right. Come back, Freddie.
Be careful.
What's nice about that is also about the crime scene, plus this conference. I want to thank the fire department for going after those grants, you know, probably just like that, anyway. Thanks, Junior.
Thank you, students. Thank you, teaching, too.
Next on the reports, State Committee, this is Councilmember Johnny Cook, as we said, he's out with his daughter. The Street Committee, Councilmember Clint Hollisworth.
It's tough to beat out the fruit.
No, the committee, I'm going to do, um, let her look a little bit further down on the list tonight. We are going to go to the report of the mayor, uh, Mayor Max St. Elton for his report.
Thank you, Mr. President. Tonight, I will handle the budget for the next fifteen years. I will thank you, counsel, for all the hard work you've done, uh, many hours and billions, and I thank you for all of the good budgets. Also, I would like to compliment all the departments, each department has come, handled before. The council and the mayor, their presentations on the lead, on the budget, they're well prepared to give out, send out, so I compliment them, yeah. I compliment everyone who's working on the budget, I know, like, we have four of them, I'm, I'm, I might give like a courtroom, and then, and at the end of the day, I can say that our finances are in good shape, but I won't let, uh, you know, talk to you to be down on that. But I will say that we were fortunate enough to be able to give the employees, see, first and second, and, 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 and,[1172.12] uh, 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 uh,[1798.12]